...
As always, thank you for that. Carol Litterer could show that Supervisors Cassiola, Agizio, Fisher, Barney and Shafani are in attendance. In addition, our Township Manager Don Januso, Assistant Township Manager and Director of Planning Jack King, our Chief of Police Sean Bukowinski, our new Fire Chief Ted Wolford, our Township Engineer Dan Dazeroth and our Township Solicitor Gretchen Moore are in attendance. Now I'm gonna move two items up from later on in the agenda, I'm gonna move right at the beginning. We have some special guests here, including Judge Valerie Costanza from the Common Police Court in Washington. She's here to actually swear in our new Police, our new Fire Chief. We have many of our firemen here that I guess they wanted to see this. But we have two items of housekeeping to take care of first, so that he can actually really be officially sworn in. So I'm gonna move item 215-2024 right now. We're gonna consider that Ordinance Number 7-2024, amending Chapter 18 of the Cecil Township Code of Ordinances to establish the Cecil Township Department of Fire and Emergency Services. Is there a move to?
Same move.
Yeah, we wanna make sure that people have to build a comment on this before.
I'm sorry, okay. I don't know if anybody has any comments on this. We're creating a new, kind of a joint here in the department. If you've been following us through the last six months, we've had a Steering Committee of Firemen and our Acting Chief at the time, working to get all our fire departments to be under one umbrella. So if you have any, this is getting us towards or closer to that goal. So if anybody has any comments on that, thank you for that Gretchen. Is there a motion to approve that ordinance?
Same move.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For Ordinance Number 216-2024, it's Ordinance Number 8-2024, amending our Section 18-4 of the Cecil Township Code of Ordinances to reflect the employment status of the Fire Chief as a contract position. This came about because our original Fire Chief Mac McMullin, he was an at-will employee. This contract, Mr. Wolford talked to us about having, actually having a contract and not being at-will. I think the Board, based on comments from what we've gotten from our Steering Committee and many of our Fire Chiefs, they would really like to see this work with Mr. Wolford. So he had asked for, to have a contract instead of a, just an at-will status. So we are changing the ordinance accordingly, and this amendment actually changes that. So to make it as simple as I can, but that's what we're doing here with this ordinance. That's all it's doing. Are there any comments from the residents on that change that we're doing?
What did it add standard does that give him?
She should have to go to the microphone, because this is being recorded.
Yeah, please, everybody can hear you.
AC 1052, Sycamore Street, just wondering if by doing the change that gives Ted full coverage or regular benefits like all you guys have for health insurance and that kind of thing?
It's not necessarily related to that. It's, our ordinance originally was just an at-will position. We're making the position, has nothing to do with him. We're making a position as a contracted, contractual position. So it has nothing to do with him. Yes, I think last month, we actually approved the contract with him. And you may be aware of that, but this has nothing to do with him on this item here. So, any other comments? Do I have a motion to approve that, this amendment?
Same move.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. But that's not for Ted yet.
Wait, we'll pause in a minute.
We're hearing that for an amendment. Now, we would like to hear, have Ted come up here please and the, Judge Costanza?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I Kevin T. Wolford.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
The court obeying this bet.
The court obeying this bet.
The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Central England. And that I will discharge the duty. As Cecil Township Fire Chief. With finality.
With Judge Costanza here, he's more official than any of us up here.
I just wanna thank everybody, especially everybody in the back of the room here. If you look, I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the people standing back here. Especially the guys from Mount Pleasant Fire Department over in Hickory, Peters Township Fire Department, North Strabane, McDonald Fire Department, and then our guys here from Cecil Township. You've all been great to me, you've been supportive. I've been a longtime resident of Cecil Township. I pretty much grew up here my whole life, and I'm happy to be here to serve Cecil Township as the Fire Chief. Thank you.
And to the firemen from other municipalities, we're hoping that they start doing our part more and reciprocating more and being a part of your departments also, to help you out whenever you need it. You've been, you've been there for us for years, and we're starting to come on board to have paid firemen and we'll be on your back, at your backs also. Thank you guys. We're gonna get to the boring part of our meeting, so I mean, if you have other duties and things like that, you're welcome to go now, you're welcome to stay. It's a public meeting, but ours are usually boring.
This is like in my ear.
It just does them automatically.
Hey Ted, go ahead with them for a little while.
Nobody loves it.
Yes sir, they're giving most comments about that.
No you don't. We should have had them take a pic, we should have had him take a picture with Judge Costanzo and us.
I thought I saw you back there taking pictures.
Judge Costanzo, can you come up here for one second?
Well Ted's are gone already.
Well, he's right there. Chief Wolford. Fire Chief, can you grab him for a picture?
He wanna get a photo op.
I know, can we get one first, so we can ever meet? Can we get a picture with a judge? And then you can take as many pictures.
Yeah.
Take one with the board as well.
Yeah, with the board. Please speak out, just we want a picture.
Over there somewhere, find a better background than us.
No, no, we want it with the boards.
Yeah, the flags would be nice.
Tom, with the boards.
Alright, okay.
I already got a picture of the two of them.
Oh, alright.
Jack, will you come in?
Here, let's go over here by the flag.
We take it.
Sure.
You too.
You wanna stick them up there?
Yeah, come up.
Darlene, you're a part of the board, photo op. Darlene, you're a part of the board. I don't wanna be right there. I wanna hide.
Pretty sad.
This is a big deal, so.
When'd you start watching them?
Oh, I stopped. I wasn't there. I was able to shut it off. My husband now, he's there. Thank you. Alright, now, now. Yes, you don't need to sit through a boring meeting, thank you. Wait, come here. Thank you. Good job, that's what my son says all the time. Actually posted it on social media.
We're gonna continue with our regularly scheduled meeting. We need to entertain citizens' comments. If you see anything on the agenda that you'd like to make a comment on, please feel free at this time. Looks like a lengthy agenda, but it's nothing complicated.
I had a question on the right-to-know policy changes that you're making. Can you please explain what we're changing?
You wanted to do that, Gretchen?
Yeah, sure. And this will be publicly available if it passes. Basically, the policy was fairly outdated, so we modernized it. Basically, taking most of it from the standard OOR policy that they have. The impetus for it primarily was to address anonymous requests, which we didn't previously address in our policy and the fact that the township is not obligated to respond to anonymous requests. So that was the impetus, but then we used it as an opportunity to modernize the whole policy and use the most recent version that OOR endorses.
Okay. I think that was on, hold on. Oh, I had a question about this. 214-2024, about the trips per square feet, per square foot.
I'm gonna describe that briefly, then I think Dan can probably do a better job.
Okay.
Whenever we were proposing, working with Embassy to allow some residential uses in a land use category, we had amended our definitions. And we considered adding businesses and professional offices to allow some businesses to go into that residential land use category, to add it to the list in other words. But we also knew that we didn't wanna have a lot of high-traffic business or professional offices. There's a whole range of businesses you could have that, you know, might have low traffic, like an attorney or an accountant, or high-traffic like a Med Express or something like that, or a, what did we talk about, Don?
The diocesan clinic.
Yeah, something like, clinic like that. We decided that we wanna allow some commercials, but not necessarily mild ones, because most professional and business offices are pretty mild, but they could be high-traffic generators. So I asked Dan to talk to our traffic engineer, and he had worked with them to come up with businesses that just seemed to have very low, you know, footprint for traffic. And I think, Dan, can you describe that code that you, that you use?
So the IT manual, which is the bible of traffic engineers, describes the total number of trips that can be expected from professional business and office. And the number that's in the, in the proposed ordinance, the 10.84 trips per square foot for total daily trips, is, is that amount of trips. So anything greater than, if somebody would come in with a proposed use, we would ask for trip generation for that use, based upon the IT manual. If it exceeded this number of 10.84 trips per square foot, then it would immediately move it to a conditional use. Under a conditional use, then the Board can impose reasonable conditions such as hours of operation, you know, type of activities that could occur.
Or expanded parking or things like that.
Yeah, parking, other things that would be a part of a typical conditional use. So it's just an additional safeguard, so that you have residential and businesses operating in the same facility, that you don't have people coming into the township meeting saying, hey, why did you let that business go? And it's, it's ruined our way of life in the residential building.
We can kinda trust the business owners, they're not gonna bring a business into their residential area that's gonna be disruptive to their main clientele there, but generally, it's, you just have to keep some control. And I don't think any businesses are gonna have any issues with milder use, commercial being allowed there as opposed to unlimited. And again, business and professional offices, they're not in any way considered serious like gas stations and body shops and things, other C1 commercial uses that are pretty impactful. So this, I think, it's a happy medium, and it's gonna help a lot of the businesses in South Point to, you know, be viable and, you know, keep, keep their doors open.
So, Dan, usually the trip generation reports, and when they do them, they generate based on AM and PM hours? That wouldn't be included in this?
No, we did, we did it based upon total trips, because we thought that was most important. It would be the activity going on for the entire day, as opposed to AM and PM trips are just between three and five and, and seven to nine.
Alright, thank you.
And thank you for the input on that, Dan, that helped us solve that issue that we were having. Any of the, I mean, anybody else have any comments or questions on any agenda items? If not, we're gonna get right into our resolutions. Now I've got some announcements to make first. You can read the long one yourself about fall leaf collections will begin on Monday, and there's several different days are listed, and it tells you that the leaves have to be bagged in biodegradable paper bags. And there's many dates, so you can read that yourself. Our Ladies Auxiliary is sponsoring a family Halloween bingo at the Cecil Number Three Fire Department. Doors on October 13th, doors open at 11:00 AM, bingo starts at noon. Our Historic Society will be meeting on October 16th at 7:00 PM in this room here. Cecil Township's Trail of Treats, sponsored by our Parks and Recreation Board, will be held in our Cecil Park on Saturday, October 19th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's always a good turnout there. Our, and the Ladies Auxiliary's are also sponsoring a Halloween dance at the Cecil Number Three Fire Hall on Saturday, October 26th. You can read the rest of that. Trick or Cheat in Cecil Township will be on Thursday, October 31st from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Again, if you are participating, please leave your porch lights on. Alright, for Resolutions Number 206-2024, consider setting the date for a public hearing regarding the rezoning application of 2024-0025. The application is, applicant is Keystone 76 Development. They're looking at property on Five Coomer Road. They're asking to have the property changed from R1 Low Density Residential to our new mixed-use residential. Again, that's the property where the former greenhouse is, on top of the hill by Glass Hill right here. Again, it, that's part of the plan that we had when we created that new zone, where we're trying to give property owners a little bit more say in what kind of development goes on on their own property. So this property owner is working with his developer, and they will ask for things that are permitted in the mixed-use residential, so it will be some kind of residential. But again, we're giving them some say in it.
Tom.
Huzer, go ahead.
In addition to this, what about the property that's right across the road? That is the Elizabeth Collins Estate? Being that we talked about one side of the road being MUC and one side being MUR. Now, right across the road from them is gonna be, we're gonna be having a hearing on rezoning that. Is there a chance that?
Well, technically, this rezoning, it's going to just another residential use. If we decide to change some property up there to that mixed-use commercial, then that's a, you know, bigger issue, because we're bringing commercial in. But right now, if we do that, and you've heard, we've been tied up with this oil and gas ordinance for quite a while, we've kinda put that on the back burner, but we've adopted those two new ordinances, or we've created a mixed-use residential and a mixed-use commercial, we haven't applied them yet. If the township goes and looks at our areas where we think those will work all over the township, then we'll have hearings on that, and the township will basically foot the bill for it, and will adopt, you know, some of the properties that we look at for new uses. But this applicant, I guess he didn't wanna wait for that, and he has a right. Anybody has a right to ask to have their property rezoned. So he's, this is a standalone application, and he has a right to ask, and we have a right to have a hearing, and that's what we're doing for this applicant. So I mean, somebody from the Shafani estate can either come to us, or they can wait till we do the whole township-wide issue. It's up to them.
Okay, well, that's why I'm asking, because they're, you know, Shafani, Shafani, and the estate of Elizabeth, and they're planning on looking at something to be done up there.
Well, they can come to the township again, or they can wait and see if, and participate in our hearings, and it might be changed through our initiative.
Okay.
Alright. Is there a motion to approve this? Oh, no, it's just we're setting a hearing date.
Yeah.
I think we said we could do that right before our November meeting, it gives us the 45, or the 45 days that we needed.
Is that what we need?
Gretchen, will you look at that?
For the rezoning?
Yes, yes. Can it work?
Yeah, so again, you're, you're gonna have the hearing, and then make a decision whether to rezone, then you would actually draft the ordinance and rezone. If you want to create the ordinance and have the hearing based on that ordinance, it would need to be longer. Do you understand the distinction?
I do.
Like, we could just have the hearing, and then you, then we could go through the formal process. If the Board says, yes, we want to make this, then we could just go through the process of the ordinance change. And if that's the case, you could have a hearing in November.
Well, what would work better for the applicant? I mean, obviously, he's anxious to get underway.
They're under an agreement of sale, so they will move as quickly as possible.
Then I would say get the ordinance ready.
Alright.
Get it over to all the places, then you need 45 days, because it's a map change. And then when you have that hearing, if you vote thereafter in a meeting, which could be on that same day, you'd actually be voting on the ordinance that's improperly advertised and circulated to the Planning Commission.
So with 45 days from, even if we do it now, start now, it's gonna be somewhere in the middle of November.
Right.
And so we can have a special meeting immediately following that hearing, that'd be just standalone, right? So give me a date that's after 45 days.
The easiest way to do it is December 2nd, but if you wanna do it before then.
That's a long way out.
The easiest is December 2nd? Do you have a problem with that?
You already have a meeting that day.
Actually, I'm not here. I'm not here.
But that's your next meeting, right? December 2nd.
I'm here for the meeting.
November 4th is our next meeting.
But I won't make it, I won't make it before.
You couldn't make it in advance for a hearing.
I mean, you can.
Yeah, I.
I could always call in, but I can't.
I can't do this last two weeks in November for different reasons.
Then let's do it on December 2nd then, and we'll get you to call if you need.
I can call in.
Alright. Alright, let's set it for December 2nd. Half an hour is probably enough time, right? 5:30, I mean, 6:30?
Okay.
It's on the agenda, so is there a motion to approve that date?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Where is it on the ordinance? I said it.
Okay, so the motion carries.
Where am I missing?
We gotta move on. Item Number 207-2024, it's a consider application 2024-0020 for the muse lots Number 205 and Number 206, and it conducts, it's just a consolidation plan. Dan?
Yeah, this is at 65 and 67 Sycamore Street. They are really just proposing to make the demising wall, or the demising line between the inflex unit and make it all one lot. The applicant, I don't know if they're here tonight, pointed out at the Planning Commission meeting that they're doing this for finance purposes, it needs to be all one lot.
Okay.
And they're doing renovations to the building.
In the, in the eyes of an MPC, whether you're combining two lots or breaking apart, it's still considered a subdivision, so.
Yes.
So, but they're making one lot of the two.
Correct.
Are there any questions on this issue? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Same move.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Again, Carol, I'm not gonna ask for any no's. Alright, if someone wants to say nay, then just make sure you do it. Make sure we hear you. For item 208-2024, it's consider the application 2021-0006 for the Traditions of America, it's Phase 6 and 7 in their subdivision plan on Han Road. Again, Dan?
For members of the Board, this application has been before you before, and it's already been approved. This'll be the second time they're asking for reapproval. They, they had it approved, they withdrew it, and now they're back on again. And it's necessary for the Board to reapprove it, so that the county will sign it, because the dates ran out. So I asked Liz just to put it on the agenda tonight. There's been some issues over there in terms of them wanting to do these last two phases. They've had some, some issues that they had to overcome construction-wise, but in speaking to people from Traditions, they're ready to go and finish out the plan.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
It's been motion, moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For Number 209-2024, it's consider application for payment number four for the work completed on Morgan Road and the North DePauli Road as part of Contract A, 2024.
Dan? We recommend payment, I'm sorry, that's wrong. This is pay application Number One for Morgan Excavating, in the amount of $284.
Wait, it says payment Number Four.
Hey, where are you on? Sorry, I have a.
209 on the agenda. It's $138,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. There we go, okay. This is payment application Number Four, Contract A, Payment Maintenance. This is for work to date completed by independent enterprises in the amount of $138,836.72 for their work related to North DePauli Road as a part of Contract A. I recommend payment.
I'll make.
And this is just a progress payment, we've not filed the contract out, they're doing punchless work now, and we'll be filing this out next month.
I'll make a motion for payment.
Been moved.
Same move.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Carol, let the record show four ayes and one abstention. For item Number 210-2024, it's consider application for payment Number Two for the work completed to date for striping of the South Point Boulevard as part of Contract C in 2024, in the amount of $13,099.68 to Parking Lot Paving, Inc.
Yeah, this, this is an ongoing contract that we have with Parking Lot Paving, and as you know, we've repaved South Point Boulevard, and this is for the actual line striping of South Point Boulevard, and payment is due in the amount of $13,099.68.
Is there a motion to approve that payment?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item Number 211-2024, it's a consider application for payment Number Three for the work completed to date on line striping on South Point Boulevard in the transition area, the area from the four lane to two lanes, as part of the Contract C paving project.
Again, same recommendation, would recommend payment for this item. It was set up as a separate item, second part of the project, and the payment is due.
I'll make a motion to pay it.
It's been moved. I'll second that, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item 212-2024, it's consider application for payment Number One for the work completed to date for the Klinger Road improvements in a public works paving contract.
Yeah, pleased to report that Klinger Road is opened back up again, and the work is complete to improve the site distance on the road and repave the road in association with a public works project. And Morgan did a, did a good job, I haven't seen it myself, but the reports have been good. And Joe Seitz is recommended, and I do recommend payment, the progress payment to Morgan in the amount of $248, $389.98.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item 213-2024, it's to consider application for payment Number 17 for the work completed to date for the Township Public Works Facility, part of the electrical project in the amount of $61,926.61 to Schultz Electric.
Yeah, Schultz has been the, the last contractor to obtain their parts due to supply issues. They finally, the electrical panels and so forth came in. West Penn Power has brought service to the building. So this is a payment that is due to Schultz in the amount of $61,926.61.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Before you move on, Tom, I just wanna mention to the Board, I didn't give. Before you move on, Tom, I just want to mention to the board, I didn't give a report on the Public Works Building, but the work is progressing well up there and is nearly complete. One of the issues of constructing this building required three-phase power to be brought in by West Penn Power. The good news from West Penn Power, they originally quoted us like a hundred and twenty-five thousand to bring that in. That was always carried in the budget. They ended up billing about fifty-four thousand on that, but the way they brought the services into the building required sort of two separate services, one that's gonna supply the fire pump, and the second one services the building itself. So we do expect a change order. We're still coming out ahead on this, but we'll be presenting a change order next month for this particular item. It's one of the few real changes that we've had on the building since it's been bid. So, just, just a brief update. That's it.
All right. For item 214-2024, it's, oh wait, Carol, let the record show that it was past four to one. Item 214-2024, it's consider ordinance number six-2024, amending the Cecil Township Unified Development Ordinance with text change. We're adding something to section nine thirteen G1. It's just one new item. And this says business and professional offices as a use by right for a total daily trip generation of less than ten point eight four trips per square foot. Okay, I'm not gonna read the rest of that. Dan described it as well as could be described. Is there any questions on that one?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a motion on it?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. For ordinance, or item number 217-2024, it's to consider resolution number 217-2024, amending the Cecil Township right-to-know policy, and I think it was well described by our solicitor. Any questions, comments?
No, I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
One question. Gretchen mentioned, what, that we has a lot of anonymous right-to-knows coming in?
She didn't say that there was a lot, but it wasn't addressed. And the law doesn't require us to have to respond to anonymous requests, so our ordinance now will reflect that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
I'll second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion carries. For item 218-2024, it's consider approval of our January first through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-nine contract for our Cecil Township Public Works Department. It's with our Teamsters Local Union number two oh five, representing blue-collar non-professional workers. I might mention before I even ask for it, we really have to thank Cindy Fisher for her work. I asked her to work with the guys, and I know it's tough. We work with those guys every day, so it's tough when negotiating times comes around, and it's, nobody likes to do that because they're guys we work with every day, but you know, you gotta stay within our budget. We gotta, you know, not fight them, but we gotta, you know, go toe-to-toe with them. So I want to thank Jeff Huesman and Chip Pringle from our department. They worked well with us and helped us keep that contract we're, are looking at tonight. They're keeping it within our budget.
I want to say too, I did do the negotiating on behalf of the township. Frankie Gisio helped me, so he gets credit too.
I'm sorry, yeah.
And so does Dawn Janu. So they were both very helpful. But we adore our Public Works guys. We think they do a phenomenal job, and our intent was not to fight them, but to pay them a salary that they deserved and earn and do a great job for, but just to keep in mind our taxpayers' money. And I think we came to an agreement that everybody is happy with. So, it really wasn't that hard. It took us about three times, and they were great to work with. So thank you to the guys who negotiated.
Is there a motion to approve that contract?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item 219-2024, it's consider approval for the sale of the township's inspection trailer through our municipal bid process in an amount of five thousand one hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Dawn, do you know, you describe what it is?
It was just a travel trailer that was used as an inspection facility at the Public Works garage during the construction phase.
I heard a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item 220-2024, it's to consider the minutes from the public hearing on Tuesday, September third at six PM, which was to consider application number twenty-two four filed by Embassy Parks Associates. So we're just asking to approve the minutes of that hearing.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved. I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For twenty-two twenty-one, twenty-two four, it's to consider the board of supervisors' regular monthly meet, monthly minutes from Tuesday, September third at our regular monthly meeting.
You didn't know you wrote a tongue twister in there, did you?
Carol wrote that in there.
Carol, you stumped him. I'll make a motion.
Is there a motion to approve our minutes?
I'll make a motion. Way to go, Carol. Motion approved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. And then we need 222-2024, it's consider the board of supervisors' minutes from our special meeting on Wednesday, September fourth.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved. And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. For item, item number 223-2024, it's consider the general funding voices from September first through September thirtieth, twenty-two four.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, it's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, before we go to comments, I know some of our staff had some reports they wanted to make. And I mean, if you're ready, that's fine. If not, we'll get you next time. If God left, it may currently left off the agenda. So Dan, Southbridge.
It inadvertently intentionally left off the agenda.
For EMS, just wanted to point out that the CPR class that was scheduled on the fifth had to be canceled due to lack of registration for it. So we're gonna try and reschedule that during the winter, probably in February, so that.
Do I need to get on my soapbox again? You need to know CPR. I did do the Heimlich on my dog last week, so don't get too close to me, but apparently that's the thing lately. But learn CPR and practice it so that you know what to do and you don't panic. There's off my soapbox. Come to our class.
The other thing is that we were doing, Southbridge and Cecil Fire Departments will be having joint training the next two weekends for water rescue. So we're gonna do some pool time. We're gonna get the boats out and do some water rescue training between EMS and fire, so we can be prepared for the township.
That's great. Thank you, Dan.
Like, what kind of pool?
What?
What kind of pool are you getting in for that?
We'll do training in the pool at South Bayet, and then we will go out to like cricket and rain, water, and actually go out in the water and train.
Oh, that's awesome. I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Ken?
You came out this weekend to the Lawrence Fire Department. Thank you. On behalf of them guys, they had their open house this Sunday, so it was a good turnout, good time. If you didn't make it this year, they're gonna have another one next year. Please go. It's Fire Prevention Month. We've teamed up with North Strabane Fire Department and Canonsburg Fire Department. We've been in the schools all day today doing fire drills for the kids. For the rest of the week, we'll be in the schools doing fire prevention presentations for the kids. Last week and next week, we'll be in the daycares. A resident on Cecil Henderson Road has been generous enough to give us a house to use for training. We've gone through all the paperwork with the DEP, the Pennsylvania State Fire Academy, CCAC, and PennDOT. We're just waiting on the approval from the DEP, and we're going to be doing a live fire training at that house on November second. The PennDOT permit is to actually close the road down for a few hours while we conduct that training, so we will get that posted. It'll be making notification to the residents in that immediate area and the next week. Steering Committee is gonna be meeting later this month to continue our work on the merger. And if at any time any of the residents have any questions on the fire department merger, please feel free to contact myself or anybody from the steering committee. We'd be happy to answer any of your questions you have. That's all I have.
Ted, how many firefighters might you train and certify that burn?
Right now, we have estimated about twenty-five signed up, and that's pretty much maxed out that we can do the class with.
Well, that's great. All right. Thank you, Ted.
On October second, we participated in the Coffee with a Cop at Generations, and Detective Markucci and Detective Nida educated our seniors on the current frauds and scams that we have. So I encourage anybody that has concerns or a phone call, contact our department. I'm sure we'll be participating in that again. It was very successful. On October twenty-sixth, from ten AM to two PM at the Dollar General next to us, we are gonna participate in the prescription drug take-back program again, and any expired or unwanted drugs will be accepted. No needles, no liquids, of course. And of course, Halloween is coming up, and we'll, as always, have additional officers patrolling the roads at Halloween, so please be cautious for the kids.
Thank you, Sean. Dawn, you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. Jack?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chairman. When last we met, talked about this little get-together we had about two weekends ago called the Thirty-Sixth Annual Fall Festival. It was another fantastic success. We had over a hundred and fifty vendors, bands, food, pumpkin painting, so much more. It was just a great day to be in Cecil Township. Many thanks need to be said, and first, I want to thank the Parks and Recreation Board under Wendy Johnson's guidance. It's Jason, Arden, Heather, Barb, and Nicole. I want to thank Kenny and Sandra Strain for helping Glenn Ridenbaugh, who is our, doubles as our postmaster, but one phenomenal cook during the weekend. Arlene Curry, Bonnie Calden, Cody Rustler, Sean Marsette. If any of you don't know, Mark Cercredi makes a mean cabbage and noodles. Want to thank Bob McColsky, who masterminds the layout of the outfield. We were able to get eighty booths out in, in the outfield this year. We've never been able to do that, plus tables, plus vendors, plus the train guy, so, and the sound guy. So, big shout-out to Gary Schwartz, our sound guy, as well. Bigger thank yous to Sean Bukowinski and Richie Gisio, who in their subtle way, in their gentle gentlemanly way, have a way to kick me in the behind whenever there's a problem by saying, "We got a problem." And I appreciate their, their patience and their direction in pulling this event off. This was the biggest one we've ever done. Always Safe for not only donating the pumpkins, but also for smooth parking. How many people enjoyed that smooth parking? We overcame some challenges from the previous year, but thanks to Always Safe and in conjunction with the Cecil Township Police Department, we were able to park over eight hundred cars over here, basically about twelve hundred cars in six different locations, and kept Route Fifty open and clear so that people wouldn't get stuck all the way back to the split at the new, at New Fifty. Public Works, I want to thank Bill Boderauf, who's never said no, even though I'd call him at the last minute and say, "Can we?" And he always said yes, and he always came out. Rick Truschel and Maddox Truschel, they were the ones that collected all of those bags, and there were a lot of garbage being generated out there, especially on Saturday. I had some support from Cody Rustler and Sean Marsette, who actually helped them as much moving that, that around, getting, getting it out of the way, and actually getting it over to the dumpsters. All the Public Works guys that cut Serenzius Field, that were always there, that helped set up, put the hay bales down. This was a huge effort by everybody, and I greatly appreciate everybody's help. Another very important shout-out to the Fire Department. Under Ted Wolford's guidance, they put up those banners. Those are tricky. Every year, those are tricky, and the wind didn't, didn't really work with us this year. Some, you know, kind of blew, blew a little bit, but we've had our issues with those banners, but they, they made, made it look easy. Southbridge EMS, Dan and Jordan saved the day. We had one little girl that had never been stung by a bee, and she got stung twice in the same day. And in their very gentle way, they turned all those tears into a smile and, and really saved the day. So I appreciate you guys being there. Finally, I want to thank the supervisors for always letting us in the Parks and Recreation side of things do these events. Yeah, we, we went big this year. And my motto is go big or go home. Well, we went big, and we may decide to scale it back a little bit next year because we went a little bit too big. But we did, we were able to get across the stream. We had a kid zone over there where the pumpkin painting and the bounce houses and a bunch of booths just designed for kids were over there. Had very, very little negative feedback. Aside from getting rain on a little bit on Sunday, I thought it was an overall success. So thank you for letting us do that each and every year. Appreciate it.
Can I add really quickly? Can I add? Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Can I, I'd like to thank a few people too. First of all, I'd like to thank Carol Farkas and Teresa Munger, who organize the raffle every year. This year, she collects all those baskets that people get to bid on, and bear with me a sec, I just had it up. This year, the income from that was three thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Thank you, thank you. They sit there for two days straight, get there at seven in the morning, so thank you. And then a huge thank you to the guy who just stood up there and did that list, because he deserves it too. He's not gonna thank himself, but thank you. I saw him running around sweating for two straight days and just kept saying, "Can we help you?" Nope, nope, nope. So, thank you. But thank you again to Carol and Teresa, too. Quickly, can we ask the board to come next week usually, or next month, so we can recognize the Parks and Rec Board?
I snuck away.
They probably need some time away from us anyways this month, but can we have them come to November so we can thank them in person?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Now, citizens' comments. General comments, if you have any comments you'd like to make, feel free at this time to come up. But please come up to the mic and give us your name, too.
This work now?
That works, yep.
Oh, this works now. That's nice. Michelle Stonemark, Forty North DePauli. I'm gonna kind of jump on the back of Supervisor's Barney question. Was there a specific anonymous request that came in? Right-to-know request?
Oh, no. This was guidance that was.
Okay.
Guidance from the Office of Open Records.
Okay.
They, they just recommended plans that hadn't been, that hadn't been updated.
Okay.
They recommended we update those, and we modeled it after their, their model ordinance.
Okay, I was just, because it kind of just sounded like that there was one, and I was just curious.
No, no.
Yeah, I would say, and I didn't know if there was one particularly here. Across the state, it was a big issue. There was a bunch of anonymous requesters, which is when ORR came out with this advice to say, "Listen, if you, if you specifically don't want to take an anonymous request, make it clear in your policy. You don't have to take it."
Okay. And on the subject of right-to-know requests, I wanted to let you all know that I've been made aware that Range Resources requested all of my emails to the Board of Supervisors regarding the ordinance. I'm sure you probably all know that. I think it's a bullying tactic on their end. I think it's ridiculous that you're gonna request something from a private citizen between, you know, that should be a fairly personal conversation. I should have some, you know, I should have some, what's the word I'm looking for?
Expectation of privacy.
Expectation of privacy, yes, when I'm communicating with my supervisors. That being said, I wanted to make sure that it was going to be okay before I did it, that I could, you know, do the same and request all of the communications between Supervisors Barney and Shafoni and Range Resources. And if I could also, am I also entitled to the communications of certain residents like Debbie Augustine, Candy Wathier, et cetera, and the Board of Supervisors regarding the ordinance?
Michelle, that doesn't come to us. That goes to, directly to the officer, so please make any requests to him.
Okay, but I am allowed to make such requests, is the question I was asking.
You gotta talk to him about it. He'll know.
Okay. I mean, if I'm not entitled to privacy, nobody should be.
Anybody else?
Hello, Joanne Camerson, two oh eight Locust Street Amuse. I was here at the August meeting, August fifth, and I was promised that the two-ten Locust Street next to me connected, if it did not sell at the tax sale on September twenty-first, September twenty- if it did not sell at the tax sale on September 21st, September 25th, would be, you'd be able to go in, you're promised to go in and clean up the garbage inside because it's just terrible living next to it. It was not sold because it was taken off the tax sale list two days before. And then a couple of days later, it's back on the tax sale list. Can you tell me who and why it was taken off the tax sale list?
I feel like I owe you an apology. I am the one who said that it would come off the, or if it didn't sell, we would take care of it. It was not the township that requested that it come off the tax list. But I was told this morning by Commissioner Sherman that it was at the request of Supervisor Bill Shafoni. I'm just being transparent because I don't want an issue. And so, why that happened is still unclear at this point, but it was not at the request of the township.
Well, it's, I'm still in the same boat I was two months ago.
Yeah.
So how do I get, even though I was promised, you promised, but you figured something was going to happen, but nothing happened, then now what?
I mean, to be frank, like, the township had a plan. And why, you know this, I spent the past week trying to figure out why it was taken off the tax sale list. And until this morning, wasn't told why. There were a lot of people pointing fingers in a lot of directions. And it, the most recent one is that Supervisor Shafoni requested that it be pulled off the tax list now.
Which is untrue.
I mean, that's what...
But it's back on the tax list now.
Yeah.
It's back on. It was off when it's on, so what do I do? Who would be responsible for cleaning that?
Joanne?
Yes?
What, when you called Daryl Price, I know you had several conversations with him.
I had two conversations with him.
And one was opposite from what, the first time was completely opposite from the second phone call.
The first time I talked to him on September 25th, I waited till like 3:00 in the afternoon to get the ducks in the row to see who bought what. I called him, and I was happy. He was nice. "Oh, you know, we're going to help you. The county takes over programs. Give me a couple of weeks." All sounded good. Then I called him back Tuesday to get an update. He says, "I didn't tell you that." And it's back on sale for November, so now what? And I tried to call him again, and I can't, no return call.
Unfortunately, it wasn't at the request of the township. We had a plan to have the property cleaned up in a timely manner, and we told you that in August, me specifically told you that in August. No one representing this Board of Supervisors was specifically directed to have that pulled off the tax list. So if it came off the tax list, your, I don't say issue, but your... What's the word I'm looking for? Yeah, is directed at the individuals, whether it be, whomever that be, who had it removed from the tax sale. So...
So the plan to clean it up is?
Can I ask a question? There, no one else has had the timer. Other people have gone over three minutes. There's not a three-minute time limit on a regular business meeting. So turn your timer off and let her ask her questions. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so how do I get it cleaned up now?
So, again, that question is for the individual who actually had it removed from the tax list, whether it be Supervisor Shafoni or Daryl Price. Unfortunately, this board, we can't.
It was not me.
But I was promised if it did not sell, because this has been going on since May, really it's been going on since January, but May's when I brought it up.
It looks like it's going to have to go on for another month if it's back on. It was supposed to have been on...
You'd have to live like that.
Pardon me?
I'd have to live like that still.
Well, I mean, we've sent, I mean, Bill, I know he's had his guys cut the grass and clean up some of the trash on the outside.
He did cut grass.
That's what we normally do for debilitated property like that. We'll normally go inside, and I'm just saying that there was a mix up...
Because of the health issues and the...
All right, but I'm just saying, there was a mix up on the, you know, for whatever cause it, there was a mix up on the tax sale.
There wasn't a mix up.
Well, I mean, something happened.
There was a conversation that happened. I'm just, like, I'm done. I'm not going to...
That's right, that's the point. It's, we're not going to do anything this month. If it's on, let's see where, that it goes next month.
What happens, what happens, same thing happens next month.
Excuse me, my name is Karen, and this is my sister.
You need to say your last name and your address for the record.
My name is Karen Moran. I live at 1459 Orchard Drive, Pittsburgh, PA. I grew up in Cannonsburg. This is my sister. I've been listening to her for two years, and then the past year, then the past month, then the past whatever. Her question is, it's a vacant house. She had to convince everybody it's vacant. She came to this, she makes calls, she works. She's not a spring chicken. She's cutting grass, she's doing all this as she works. The question is, is who took it off, not, she doesn't care. She's asked you to cut her grass and clean the garbage out. There's rats there. There's animals. It affects the rest of the community. She doesn't care if he took it off, you took it off, whoever.
And we gave you an answer, but we said, we don't normally go inside houses. We're trying to make an exception for that, but I'm saying, there was, something happened and it didn't get up for tax sale this month.
There's an ordinance that say emergency, it benefits, that when something is condemned, the township has authorization. And I think the solicitor...
It hasn't been condemned yet.
It has been condemned.
Well, I'm sorry, that was put on hold because of the tax sale.
But there is a sign...
I'm just telling you, we're going to look at it again next month. Hopefully it goes. It wasn't our fault that it went off. I'm just saying, we're not going to authorize a solicitor to go get a court order to try to clean something up if next month somebody's going to do it. I'm sorry that happened, but we're not going to go in there.
So I just want you to know, she's wasted so much time, and it's really not a big job. It's a little house. They would fight her to cut the grass, you know what I mean? To clean the garbage out. How much can it cost? Somebody will donate a dumpster probably, but...
It's not a question of how much it costs, it's a question of going in somebody's personal property.
It's not prudent for us to do it.
No, our solicitor says that we can't just go inside somebody's house. Cleaning up a yard is one thing.
Might ask the person's permission to go in there. Might just get that person. And then she...
If you can get the owner's permission, then you should get the owner's permission, and maybe find some folks who are willing to go in and do that. I mean, that's, the big part of it is getting the owner's permission, and then just determining who the appropriate person is. The township is, I typically would never recommend the township to go into someone's private home. Certainly, they can't go without permission, so now that's a whole court process because we have to go to court.
But isn't it in those regulations that you have?
Not to go into someone's house and clean it up.
When it's condemned?
Absolutely not. You still would need a court order to go in and clean it up and lean it, and now that's taxpayer money to go in and enter someone's home. And it opens the township up to liability as well. So what I'm hearing is they're not in a position to want to do that at this point.
They say when it's condemned, uninhabitable, usually they would demolish. Well, they can't demolish this. Okay, so you can't demolish it? What happens? It sits there forever? You can't demolish it, so it's going to sit there forever. We've waited every month, we've been waiting for it.
The goal is for it to get sold.
That's the right solution for it to get sold.
What?
And that's the right solution for it to get sold, and somebody will turn it into something nice.
It never should have been taken off the tax list.
That's not my fault.
I understand, and it's not the township's fault either.
Can someone hear, is it township responsibility or county responsibility? No. Somebody has to take accountability.
Well, the township does not put properties on tax sales. That's a function of the county government, so this board doesn't have that authority to...
But somebody had a conversation to have it pulled off, and it wasn't at the request of the township.
Kara Sherden, 58 North Appalie. Can we just not go in and clean it up for her and then issue a lien? Is that not the way that it works?
You just heard what our solicitor said, we can't go inside.
Not without a court order.
But if they talk to the county commissioner, can they do that?
If the property owner gives them permission, and they want to get some folks to go in with permission, that, they can decide whether to do that.
They have to pay for that though, right? Okay, so if, so Cindy, Supervisor Fisher, are you saying that you contacted Nick Sherman? Nick Sherman said that Bill Shafoni had this taken off the tax list?
That is what I was told.
Okay.
That is 100% not true.
Do you have any interest in this property, Mr. Shafoni?
No.
And no, no plans or anything like that for this property at all? And no one you know said anything to Commissioner Sherman for...
We're not going to question the supervisor here. If you want to talk to him after the meeting, you can do that.
Then how do we...
No, I'm saying, if you want to talk to him, you can talk to him after a meeting. It's not township business here.
Right, but there's people in the township that are suffering from a longstanding issue with, like, literal health, safety, and well-being.
And we told you what happened, and we don't know why it happened. The township didn't do it. If you want to ask him more questions, that's not...
I don't want to ask him questions, I want you guys to ask Commissioner Sherman questions. And we go research that issue with him.
We did ask Commissioner Sherman questions, and the county's position is that at the request of Cecil Township, Cecil Township's Representative Bill Shafoni, that it was taken off the tax sale. That is their position. That's what he told me this morning on the phone.
Did he provide us in writing or anything like that?
I don't think anybody can provide any writing, that's the issue. The problem is, nobody, nobody, nobody on this board authorized anybody from this township to have it taken off. So whether it was an issue with Supervisor Shafoni or an issue with Commissioner's office, we don't know. But it was taken off the tax roll without this board's knowledge or approval.
Okay, so we can go to the next county commissioner meeting and ask him to testify or speak to the fact that that's what happened or that's what didn't happen. And if there's some other reason that he's throwing Mr. Shafoni under the bus, I'd love to know that too, because either way, if, because he's telling us that it's at this board's mistake that this poor woman is having to deal with the situation. So I don't understand how they can't have to provide something like that in writing. I mean, that's a big deal that this is kicking the can down the road for her. For now, another month or two months, whatever it is.
It sounds like you said you were going to go up to the Commissioners and see if you can get an answer. We don't have an answer to it. If you want to go up there, maybe you'll get an answer.
You have a much better chance of getting an answer, you know.
We did, we did get an answer though, Kara. We did get an answer. And the answer was, it was taken off of the tax sale at the request of Cecil Township. I said to Commissioner Sherman, "We did not request that." He said, "It was requested by Bill Shafoni." I immediately ended the conversation and said, "Thank you for this information. I provided the information to our township manager and our solicitor." Whether that conversation happened, we don't know. We never...
Mr. Shafoni said he didn't ask that, so I'm just saying...
So he's just making it up out of the clear blue sky? He's just making up some name? I mean, that, there's, all I'm saying is this goes back to the whole thing that we all sat together in the comprehensive plan and talked about transparency. Something doesn't seem right in the situation, and I think, I can call Nick Sherman myself. I don't know if he's going to call me back.
What's not transparent, we told you, the board had nothing to do with it, whether Bill did or not.
You're saying the board had nothing to do with it, but you don't know who did. Someone has to provide you with that information.
That's it, we're going, we have somebody else who wants to talk. We're not getting anywhere with this. We're not doing anything...
Did anybody else, my last question, I'll stand, I'll sit down. Did anybody else ask the Commissioners who took it off the list?
We told you, nobody...
No one else reached out besides Cindy?
That's what I, I just heard about it today.
Don, you reached out.
Hi, AC Roland, 52 Sycamore Street. So let's address this. I myself called down to find out what happened because on, from the previous meeting, it was determined multiple times stated...
We said, "We're not going to discuss this issue. That's not a township issue right now."
I have a right to speak here.
No, no, we're not discussing, we're done with that issue. If you have something else, if you have something else that has a township issue, we'll find that.
Put some hard work into the saw.
Is there anybody else who wants to make any comments?
So, on the 25th, there was supposed to be an auction. I lined up two buyers that buy distressed and tax-leaned properties in our township and area. They went down there and they were told Bill Shafoni pulled it. So, now...
I did not.
Then, I'm just telling you the information I found out from trying to get this lady some help. Now, in addition to that, through our last meeting, you all said, "We cannot go with the property. Nobody can find the property owner. We have to have permission." Well, by God, I did a little research. Here you go. Here you go. That is written consent from Keith, who owns the property, who allow us to go into the property, remove anything, and that he does not want any of the property that is now in the property. So now, we can't just him, and I also have the correct... Message from him on Messenger.
Hold on, hold on, AC, AC, stop. It's not owned by Keith. That's...
Keith's name is still on it?
It's not. No, it's not. It's not.
It's not. She's not going to listen to that. She's just wrong on it again. Is anybody else wants to make any comment?
Can I?
Yeah, so this is my comment. We in Hughes went the extra mile. We did everything that you guys said. You said find the property owner if you could.
And you didn't find it, so go in and clean it. You said, "We're going to clean it," so go ahead if you want to. We're not going to, all right.
We were told multiple times last meeting, or we would have already gone done it this month. Then we couldn't go in.
AC, we, AC, we thought, and we believed, that there was a, it was going to be sold at tax sale. Until two days before, it was on the tax sale list. Why it was taken off, no one from me down can explain. So stop, hold on, just listen. Instead of making us, like, seen here, we understand. We feel you. We had a plan to have this taken care of in September. If you want to address this issue, address it with the person who had it taken off for sheriff's, or off for tax sale, and address it with the person at the county who actually told them to take it off at tax sale. We can't do anything.
For that information that I've received, I have submitted a, not only a right to note, but I have put together the paperwork for the State Ethics Commission. And I am, I am putting these two on notice, that they, I have to have it notarized tomorrow. I didn't know it had to be notarized, or it had been in today. And I am opening an ethics committee to investigate how this happened. Because on the last meeting, multiple people said Bill Shafoni was getting that property. You went to these people's homes and implied that he was getting that property, or we would have gone and cleaned it up already.
Do it!
We solved our whole problem.
All right.
Y'all do not care about me.
All right. I want to mention one thing to the board members. We have a proposal to remove that obstruction on North Appalie Road, where the porch obstructs on, or the views from motors trying to look right on to Miller's Run Road. We have the right to go in there and take it down. It's going to cost some money. I'm just asking the board to approve going out for some quotes to...
Tom, you can't. It's not an agenda item. You have to add it to November.
No, no, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm asking for the board to go out for quotes for it. We don't need a motion to go out for quotes.
Go off what?
Yes, we, we could ask for quotes.
Yeah, we can't, this was not, yeah, yeah, we can't add this, but can I talk about a DCED group?
Wait a minute. What, we worked out with the owner that we would actually do the demolition of the porch and reconstruct a similar one on the side of the building. He will do all the metalwork. He said he'll put a new metal roof on his building, and he'll match a metal roof on the roof that we built. So that's just the issue, that we have something worked out with him. He said he'll supply the paint to match, you know, where the openings get filled in. All I want to know is if we're okay with working towards that. I think I asked last month if we were okay to work towards that.
We can't take a vote. It wasn't on the agenda and it's expending tax sale money.
I'm not asking to spend any money on it. We were already okay last month to actually go out, and Dan prepared sticks.
No, we can't.
Dan already, last month we... I know, but that's what I'm saying. I had to tell the board exactly what we can work out. That's the terms that he would work with us.
Okay, well, put it to us in writing and add it to the November agenda.
Are we still interested in that?
We can't, Tom, you can't. You cannot take a vote tonight.
I'm not asking for a vote, just stop it.
You're asking for a vote.
I'm not asking for a vote, just stop it. I'm just saying that that's what we can work out with him. And if that's good with somebody, then that's what we'll work towards. Us taking it down and rebuilding part of it, and he would do the finish, basically the finish work on it.
Are we going to get estimates as to what it would be?
Well, yeah, that's part of it. If we eventually go out for quotes, we'll look at quotes, and if we're satisfied with it, we could award it at some point.
I'd recommend putting a settlement agreement on the agenda for next month. And then if there can be a settlement agreement with the property owner, then you could...
Don and I have been working with him for days, and we're not going to do any more if the board says, "No, we're not interested in solving the problem." I just want to know, it's a site issue, are we interested in attacking that problem? Yes or no? That's all I want to know.
We have to for safety and sight distance visibility at that intersection.
Don, I think you said the same thing, right Bill?
Several wrecks. I mean, it's a safety issue that has to be addressed and taken care of.
Bill, are you still okay with us attacking that problem?
I wouldn't have an opinion right now. It's not on the agenda. That's my advice.
We've improved the radius in that, it's a wide road, and we still need that sight distance looking up the road to the right.
Because you'll be held to it no matter what.
We can talk one-on-one after the meeting. We can put a simple settlement limit to vote in November if they vote on the...
Well, I know there's nothing you can vote on now.
Yeah, but just, well, let's get the settlement agreed and then they can look at that.
Is that an approach? I, I gotta know that the board wants to do that. We're not gonna spend any more time on it if the board isn't willing to do it. Darlene, I need to, Darlene, you, you, you okay with us working towards that?
I guess if it's a safety feature, but why, why all of a sudden when it's been like that for years and years?
Because there's so much more traffic up there right now.
There's a lot of traffic here.
And what about the white line that is painted on there, uh, so that the residents or whoever's coming out there, that they stop at that white line and they're able to see? Are they in that big of a hurry to get out? And that, that's, that's one of the...
It's an obstruction. We're just asking, should we address it?
Yeah, we should.
Address it, but then we have to get some bids and so on and so forth.
The engineer recommends.
Alright, okay.
The engineer highly recommends this improvement. I mean, it, that part property should have been purchased many years ago. I heard the story when the township could have bought the property years ago. And for whatever reason, we weren't able to get it. It's a bad intersection. There's more traffic on the road. We did as much as we could do with the paving and the road improvements at this point. If this can be added to the road, I think it's a huge improvement.
Does that mean we take off the front of that port, the building, that porch?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a huge job either. It's, 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 you know, and I think what Tom's saying is he's just giving a report. We haven't advanced enough that at least he's got the terms worked out that he'll bring it back to the board for, for official approval if the board wants to solve the problem.
In November.
Yeah.
Does any other, anybody have any other new business?
I do, really quickly.
Go ahead.
So, a couple months ago, I talked about working with Dan and Jason Ortiz, Ortiz Ty's office to clean up that old French club on the Winnie Road. We've identified a grant that we can apply for. Um, we are in the process of applying for that grant. Hopefully we'll be finished by Friday of this week. Um, and then that will hope, will, is, if we get the grant, which we're pretty confident that we will, um, will cover the entire cost of the cleanup. So it will satisfy, um, getting the property cleaned up. It will satisfy the DEP and it will take it off of our hands, which is something we've been dealing with for two years now. Um, so hopefully this Friday.
What's the timeframe for the award, do you think?
Pretty quickly. It's a pretty quick turnaround. So, um, it's a DCED grant. Um, and then also while I'm on the subject of grants, if it's okay with you, I'd like an agenda item for the November meeting to talk about, uh, a master plan for Klinger and a DCNR grant that I'm working on with Dan's office. Uh, you know, I've been working on Klinger for a long time from a grant perspective. Um, and we've identified some things that we wanted to move forward on, but we need board's approval to do that. So, Tom, if you could, give me some agenda time in the November meeting to bring that up. I'd appreciate it.
Good, yeah, we need that. Thank you.
You're welcome. So those are the two grants that I'm currently working on. Um...
Alright. Anybody else have any new business?
Tom, I have some new business.
One more comment. Okay. He said we needed a court order to go in there, right? Okay. And AC did some lot of work. He'd like to keep permission to go in there. He said he's not the owner. The people are dead. He's the heir. Where, who are we trespassing against?
See, that's what complicates this issue, I think. That's, it's not quite as...
There's an estate there and he's the executor.
He said Keith, he, Keith, he will be, he called him the executor, which he was not gonna do with me and says, "He, we live there."
We never said you couldn't go in there. We said the township can't go.
We can't give you advice. If, if private citizens wanna figure out what to do, you all, you can figure out what you want to do as private citizens. I can't give you advice. I can tell the township, they're not walking in there without an order of court blessing it.
So we can go in there with Keith. We can do that.
With the heir's approval. They can go with the heir who this estate's approved.
They can, they can figure that out.
Remember how many times you tried to get in touch with Keith, or way, way back in springtime? And, and you couldn't get, you couldn't even locate him. Okay. Well, good for you. Yep.
Alright, Joanne, you got an answer. You, you got an answer. You can work on it separately, but we can't.
Let them run around.
Dar, Darlene, you said you had something else new?
Part, yes, I do. This, his, uh, Dawn, has the CTMA reached out to you in regard to the, uh, naming of that lane that's off of Klinger Road where the residents li, get their mail on nine Klinger. There's the lane that goes down to the sewage plant. Okay? Uh, Dawn Tishu has been asking the CTMA if they can put name at lane because his mom and dad, uh, donated the property to the sewage plant. And they would like to have recognition for that lane. There's, there's no name on it right now, but the residents that bought the property down off of it, they get their mail along Klinger and their nine Klinger. So, uh, Mike Zarencheck from the CTMA, he thought that he was gonna be able to do it without too much trouble. Well, then they reached out to Mr. Oshinsky and Mr. Oshinsky said that if they wanna open a road past the sewage plant, come out, I guess it would be out on the Cecil Hendersonville Road. I don't know if that's where it would end up at, but I don't know whether it would ever come to that. But now it's thrown on, they said we'd have to take it up with the Board of Supervisors. So Mike hasn't gotten back the Dawn Tish, but, uh, Tishu, but his family would like to have his mom and dad recognized as a name on that lane.
With Darlene, most, uh, private lanes, we, the township lets somebody name it. Uh, and it's, it has to have the word lane in it. So this, it's distinctive from a township road where it's gonna be road or drive. So, I mean, if, and it's, I think it's required if there's two or more on it to, that it should have a name for emergency response purposes.
Right.
But, I, I mean...
We don't have a problem with, with them putting up a sign.
Yeah, well, so what do we care either?
Yeah, just like, uh, whenever, uh, Mr. Secrete went along and named a lot of the roads in Cecil Township years and years ago. And...
As long as it's called lane, go ahead.
Okay, so I can tell Dawn it's not a dead issue, that we can go ahead and name it.
You can't. You have to run it through nine-one-one in county. You can't just name a road.
Yes, you can.
Yeah, the nine, well, Jamie Lane has been, that's been, and that's nine-one-one, I mean...
Is Jamie Lane on nine-one-one?
Yes.
So someone at some point notified nine-one-one.
That's the same way as me having a fire hydrant in my driveway that isn't a working fire hydrant. And the, the fire department did us a favor by coming and putting the tag on it saying that it is not a usable fire hydrant. It's there for a decoration. But, yes, you're right. Jamie Lane has been there forever. Now, it's on the Google map.
The township is responsible for naming roads and assigning a, address, not the post office.
Right.
So I'm just saying, if they, if they wanna get on that, that, um...
They wanna put their name, I think that it's recognition for his dad.
The post office will be notified and they, they would accept it.
Right. And it would be recognition for his dad. His dad and mom gave the property years ago.
Darlene, I don't see an issue with the recognition, but my suggestion to you is to run it through the county in nine-one-one if you want it to be an actual road. Just a suggestion.
We don't have to because there's nobody really on that land except the one, one individual that's nine...
It's a private driveway. That's what it is.
Right, it's a private drive. Thank you, Tom.
We're not gonna get involved.
My name's John Taylor, thirty-three eighty Miller Run Road. I want to commend all of you, commend all of you for the establishment of volunteer fire department in Cecil Township. It's a great, uh, gesture moving forward that we can all do that. The other thing is you just spent thirty thousand dollars on a PA system. Let's use it. Half the time you guys are convincing between each other and we can't hear it. If you want this to be public record, you should use the microphones. They all will have to talk directly into, so the audience and those people that are watching from home can hear what you're saying. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, John.
Tom, I have one other thing to say. Being that there's so much, uh, in the news about solar panels, are we gonna work on an ordinance here in the township in regard to solar panels?
Actually, Jack has started to collect some model ordinances for us, but I, I think we're winding down with the oil and gas ordinance. So we'll have more time to spend on some of those other ones that are coming up.
Okay.
It's not only that. We have some request, we're gonna have, have a request for, I think, a bar, a party barn or an event barn.
Yes.
Uh, so we don't have anything on the books on that, so we have to start working on that. But I think after November, we'll be, kind of put the oil and gas ordinance to rest. Maybe not in the court system, but with our township.
Then that brings up another one that I'm, uh, was approached by a resident, and that's Fred Delbo's, uh, barn down there where JR, uh, he was telling me just the other day that JR is, is interested in an indoor, uh, softball or whatever they can do inside that barn. And are we moving forward on that? Because I was asked by Fred if we're moving forward to try and get JR, uh, 'cause JR wants, I guess, buy from him or release, rent it from him for inside softball or whatever they do.
Moving forward on what, Darlene? He has the right to file an application. What do you mean moving forward?
So I know that, uh, you thought about moving forward or trying to...
Actually, our intention was after we adopted those two new types of zoning, we planned